Good evening. The hour having arrived and the quorum being present, I declare this meeting of January 8th, 2019, of the Norwood Board of Selectment officially in session. We will begin tonight's meeting as we always do with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Norwood Community Media. We have two appointments tonight at 7:15. We'll be meeting with Chief William Brooks of the Norwood Police Department and at 7:30 with Chief George Maurice of the Norwood Fire Department. I just want to begin with an opening statement tonight and I'm going to, when I'm done, invite my colleagues to respond as they wish to it. My colleagues and I want to extend our best wishes to everyone for a healthy and prosperous 2019. As we look to the coming 12 months and the years beyond, we can see that Norwood is facing a unique set of challenges and opportunities. Here are a few of the matters that this board and other boards and offices in Norwood will be dealing with in the coming year. The request for proposal for the Forbes Hill property. Selectment Plasco has been working with Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Halke Otis on a draft of the RFP document that we will hone, complete, and get out to market in the next several months. Mr. Plasco might have a word or two to offer on that this evening. Zoning. Later this month, the board will be meeting with the planning board to discuss a proposal for May's annual town meeting to amend certain zoning restrictions in the central business district. The proposed bylaw change will make it easier for property owners to redevelop their properties and thus create demand for existing and new commercial and residential units in that zone. Town meeting authorized a study by an outside organization. That study is just about complete, should be done by about, it was presented to the planning board last night, actually, and so we will be seeing it in the next couple of weeks. We look forward to the conversation on that topic. A plan for fiscal stability. The Budget Balancing Committee has voted to recommend that the Board of Selectment offer to the vote as an operational override, the purpose of which will be to stabilize the town's budget for at least five years with no loss of services on the general government side or the school department side. Barring unforeseen circumstances, we will take up this matter again, we will take up this matter sometime this month. Green Communities. The town is looking forward to participating in the Green Communities, which is a state energy efficiency program that will add and improve the sustainability initiatives of this town and the state. A New Junior High School. School Superintendent Dr. David Thompson informs us that Norwood's proposal for a new junior high has been accepted into the MSBA program, thus entitling the town to considerable reimbursement of costs if we proceed with the project. Though the matter is primarily the concern of the Norwood School Committee, this board will be involved, as might well be the Finance Commission, the PBCC, the Capital Outlay Committee, and definitely, of course, town meeting. Stay tuned. Finally, Norwood 150. On February 23rd, 2022, the town will celebrate its 150th birthday. A few folks have been getting together from time to time to bat around a number of ideas. Nothing clandestine about it, just a few history buffs who want to make the occasion a memorable one. We should look upon this birthday as Norwood's coming-out party, a rejuvenation or reintroduction to the town and the country. Perhaps we should invite a few folks to one of our next meetings in this month to discuss this celebration. Mr. Bernie Cooper, our Assistant Town Manager, has some information on the nonprofit that was established a quarter century ago. Dr. Patty Fanning and Linda Ralph from the Historical Society might want to join us, along with Charlotte Cannelli, Director of the Memorial Library. In any event, although it's three years away, the time will pass quickly, and I think perhaps it might be time to start talking in terms of forming a master committee and subcommittees and talk about how we're going to raise funds for the celebration and think about the specific events and galas that are going to attend to it. So, with that, thank you for your attention, and I turn it over to any of my colleagues who would like to have any questions or reactions or observations. Mr. Plasco?
You brought up the Forbes Hill, Mr. Chairman, and some people certainly are interested in an update on that. We've been working on getting a draft together for the RFP. Most of the work's been done by Mr. Halke Otis. There was a little delay with the holidays and so forth, but we're in full gear. Mr. Mazuko and I have met with him twice now through our fine editing of his documents. The last update he sent out just this afternoon, haven't even had a chance to look at it. We have another meeting scheduled for this Thursday where we'll bring in Kathy Conney from our purchasing department and Dave DeLuca, Trinity Dave DeLuca, Town Council, to start going over and making sure everything's legally appropriate. We hope to have the work done by January 15th, have final approval and comments by the board and get on the street.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Mr. Plasco. Anything else on any other topic for the moment?
Well, the only other thing I was going to say, you listed some items, and I agree with all of them. I think they're good to point out, but hopefully we'll be actually adding to that list with, we go through the manager's evaluation, set goals for the manager to complete, as well as the board. We'll have set some formal goals for the full year, and this would certainly be the first item on that list.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first time that a chair has left to do this. The public should please understand that we, as a board, have not taken any formal positions on these matters. These matters are brought up as a guide or as a helpful understanding for the future year. And in regard to the 150th Annual Judiciary Committee, I personally feel that it's very important that we get this organized because we have to put aside dates with entities to make sure that we have the dates. And part of this, my strong, strong feeling, is that this committee should be open to the citizens of the town of Norwood. This is a town of Norwood celebration. We need input from the citizens of the town. In particular, we need input from the young people because you're going to be around in 25 years when we celebrate the 175th. And so we need young people to help us out so that you can see how the operation works. And we need young ideas. We need new ideas. But we can't do without the old people because that's where we've all had the experience. We all know what we're doing, and we all know how to get things, how to get the job done in a happy way. When we had the 100th and the 125th, I think back, and that's all I think of is the happiness, you know? The happiness in the planning, the happiness in the events, and the camaraderie and the beautiful spirit that it created in the town. And that's what we're after, and we need a guiding, good plan, and a lot of input from the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Howard?
The unrolled party has no comments this evening, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bishop, you all set?
If you could give me an opportunity...
Take your time, sir.
Thank you, sir. The chairman spoke about a lot of different things for the future that we're planning, but one of the things that excites me the most is the rezoning of the uptown Washington Street commercial area. It's going to give us an opportunity, hopefully, to put some more residential units uptown, better commercial units, a variety of more commercial units. We won't be having 15 pizza shops and 27 nail shops, hopefully. It's going to be a better center of town, and it's going to be good for everybody. So for the first time, the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, the board of select, and the town planner, everybody is on board with one focus or one direction, and that's to do something with the uptown area and make it the vibrant place we want it to be. So that's one of the things I am looking forward to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right. Very good. Well, let's see. Chief Brooks, why do we, why do you have you come in now? We're a couple of minutes early for you, but I want to thank everybody for their comments, by the way. Look forward to working with you for the next 11 months, 12 months, 2019. Good to see you, chief.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me just make a few comments to start, and then I think I'll give you a little bit of a year in review, kind of recap, since this is your January meeting. I'll start by reminding folks and the people watching at home that all-night parking is banned in the town. That ban started November 15th. As we always do, we start by putting warning notices on cars. We put on social media. We try to remind people. And although we've had a very, I hate to say so far anyway, a very, very light winter as far as snow goes, the all-night parking ban is not tied to predictions of snow. It's in effect all the time, and we're still hearing from residents that they're surprised when they've received a ticket. I think since we began tagging for all-night parking, we've issued about 600 citations, 600 parking tickets, and that's after putting a lot of warning flyers on the windshield wipers. So we just remind people that if their car is out on the road, they do run the risk of receiving parking tickets. Just last night, our rape aggression defense course kicked off. We had another group of 25 Norwood women who were attending that self-defense course that's headed up by Sergeant Sarah Lyden and her staff. It's always a very well-received program. So this one's already underway. We'll be doing another one in the spring. We just ask people to keep their eye out for that if there's something that they're interested in participating in. Another thing they should keep an eye out for, if they're interested in the next Citizen Police Academy, we haven't set a start date, but that'll probably start sometime in March. Sergeant Tom Carey is in charge of that program. He's already begun pulling it together, and we'll be offering that in the spring. People can look for that. And speaking of the spring, we'll be giving an entrance exam on April 20th. We just secured that date as of yesterday, so that'll be held at Norwood High School. Again, people will be able to come in and take the entrance exam for the police department. You'll be hearing a lot more about that as we put out on social media and out in the public in a number of different ways, encouraging people who would be interested in working at the Norwood Police Department to come and join us and take that exam. It's a multiple-choice exam. It's just a Saturday morning. People can sign up online, and they will, once we get it up, there'll be a link on our website, and people can click on that and they can sign up for the exam. That's not there yet, but like I say, we only set the date yesterday, so they'll be seeing that within the next couple of weeks. I thought I'd talk a little bit about numbers, just comparing, taking a look back at 2008 and then maybe comparing it to 2017. Our department investigates about 400 crashes a year. That's just about where we fall. That's not people self-reporting an accident in a parking lot. That's our units responding and conducting an investigation and the officer writing report. There were 428 in 2017, a slight dip to 423 this past year, so pretty stable. Our officers arrested 73 impaired drivers over the course of 2018. That's a slight uptick from 2017 when they were 69. So again, that's pretty consistent, but that's a little bit more than one a week. We continue to encourage people, if they've had anything to drink, that they stay home. Drug arrests were about stable from '54 in 2017 to '56 last year. And then citations. Our traffic enforcement, we've been spending a lot of time and effort on that. In 2017, we wrote 4,300 citations. We wrote just over 5,000 this year. You know, about 3,000 times a year. The office is set up in neighborhoods, particularly around citizen complaints, stop signs and red lights where we've seen crashes. We focus on pedestrian enforcement and impaired driving and texting while driving, and all patrol officers on all shifts are expected to conduct traffic enforcement during their shift. So that's about a 10% increase in citations. We don't do it as a matter of revenue. We do it as a matter of public safety, so the officers have been hard at work getting that done. And then I think I'll just end by talking a little bit about the drug issue and where we are with overdoses, and really, I guess, whether it's a good sign or a bad sign, we're really about where we were last year. Last year in drug overdoses, we had 29. This year, 31, so just a little bit more. Interestingly, we haven't had an overdose in either the months of November or December. Fatal's last year were five, rather six, and this year, five. So again, kind of stable. 2018 was very similar to 2017, but at least, as I said, over the last couple of months, things have really been very, very quiet. And one thing, and I know Mr. Howard and I were speaking about it just before I came on, and I just want to make a point that in a previous meeting, and it may perhaps have been my last appearance, I talked a little bit about the 911 wireless direct program the state has where when you dial 911 from a cell phone, a Phase II cell phone, the state has the technology now to drive those cell calls so that they go directly to us. There have been some glitches with that over the course of the last month or so. That's a statewide issue, it's not just here in Norwood. So there are people with a Phase II phone that are dialing 911 that are still getting the state police. The good news is you still do get someone, and the state police, once they find out where you are, will patch those calls right through to us. But some people, when they call 911 on a cell phone, have gotten the state police instead of us. So if that's happened to anybody and they're surprised by that, it's a temporary glitch in the system. And then I guess on the heels of that, the other thing I should mention, and I think most people are aware of it, is that this month, there was about a one-day problem nationally with the 911 system. A company called Century Link, which quite frankly, I had never heard of, that manages the 911 system for the entire United States, had a technology glitch, and it caused people to get a fast-busy when they called 911, initially from cell phones and then eventually from landlines. Over the course of about six hours or so, though, that was repaired nationally, and the 911 system was back in full swing. We did not experience, we are not aware of any issues with people trying to reach us that were unable to experience no major events that day. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
All right. Chief, thank you very much. Mr. Howard?
First of all, chief, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, sir.
And I'd like to compliment you on a very quick, very good report of the last year, a quick summary, excellent. As far as the phones, just to piggyback, if I could, I've said it before, and I'll continue saying it, that you can't beat calling 762-1212 or 762-1313. Those go to the police and then the fire, and all you have to do is think two or three, you know? Yeah, 911 is in everybody's mind. I appreciate that, but sometimes it's seconds that are life and death, and that's the only thing, you know? If it's ingrained in people, I respect that on the 911, but, you know, some things I'm a bit old-fashioned, and, you know, you can't beat the 1212 and 1313. It works, you know? It always did work. And just on the phones, if I could, I couldn't agree with you more that I think the easiest way to say it about 911 that will go right in is if a person on their phone has internet, so to speak, in a roving situation, then I think there's a very good chance the call will go right in to our police department. But a phone like Mayan is an Android, and that's a tool. It looks state-of-the-art, but it isn't. It's an inexpensive phone that a lot of people, particularly seniors, have, and this would not bring, if I did 911, it would not go to Norwood. I know it would.
So for people at the home that are trying to figure this out, there's a difference between Phase I phones, which are phones that don't have latitude and longitude, in other words, they don't have locations on them.
GPS.
Those are the phones that if you dial 911, you will continue to get the state police. The Phase II phone is a phone that has latitude and longitude. In other words, your phone always seems to know where you are. Those phones are the ones that have the capability that when you call 911, it should go to your local, whatever police department, the police department in whatever community you happen to be in at the moment. But your comment about old phone numbers and new technology, there's actually, and this came up actually on Facebook when I was trying to answer people's questions and get some information out, of course, the technology of a phone, and if I say the words, "Hey Siri," too loud, my phone's going to start doing what I tell it to do, but if you just log in the business number for the Norwood Police Department, you can at any point in time just say, "Hey Siri, call Norwood Police," and that phone's going to dial up the Norwood Police using that old 762-1212...
Good boy, chief.
Or the 440-5100 number, both of which work. So that's another good, just program in your phone, Norwood Police, Walpole Police, Canton Police, for the surrounding towns, and then you can use, hey, you-know-who to make a dial that number, and you're connected right through, and it will always come to us.
Excellent, chief.
Good point, Mr. Howard.
Good point, chief. One more thing, if I could, chief. Any CPR calls planned for the near future?
No, you know, but I was at a meeting this morning with Lieutenant Cody, and I was thinking of that. I meant to catch up with them afterwards because that is something that, now with the holidays behind us, we should plan for the spring. So I'll loop back with Chief Maurice, who'll put our heads together and we'll put something together for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Howard, Mrs. Donahue, Mr. Bishop, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief, when that 911 failed nationally, were our fire boxes working, the old fire boxes that are around?
Well, I defer to my friend in the fire, chief. I'm sure that they were. I'm sure that...
They were, Mrs. Donahue. They were a completely different system, and they're hot-wired throughout town.
So that was a good thing?
Yes.
That was good that we still had them, and that was good. Now, the other thing, we got an excellent email from, I think his name was Mr. Joe Allinger. It was about all-night parking, and he raised the question, did they send, was that email forwarded to you? The question about, instead of having an all-night parking ban, could the town consider just, if there's a snow, enough calling and saying, "You can't pop on the street." Did you get that email at all?
I don't remember seeing that email. I remember there was some talk about that. You know, Norwood and from my years in Wellesley and the towns around us, I think most towns manage this by having a parking ban that goes into effect in the fall and ends in the spring. I assume that people smarter than me at some point in time determined that snowstorm by snowstorm was not as good a way to manage that.
Okay.
If the town, of course, we have just the enforcement arm. If someone thinks that there's a better idea, I'd suggest that we talk to Mr. Ryan, who has to deal with the fallout of people parking on the street during snowstorms, and he may have some views on that. I'm certainly willing to have those conversations, but I think that not only Norwood, but the towns around us must have concluded a long time ago that a seasonal ban on all-night parking is an effective way to manage that.
Thank you, chief. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And chief, I agree with that. There's been many times over the years that we've been caught off guard, not necessarily as a police department, but as a town and public work department. We go to bed thinking we're going to get a dusting or a half an inch, and we wake up with a foot or two. So that throws a monkey wrench into everything. It causes chaos when the cars are out there and have to be towed. So I think the best way to go is continue the route we're traveling on. One thing I wanted to touch on, and I think it bears repeating, you talked about traffic citations and enforcement of traffic regulations. It's not a matter of increasing our revenue. It's a matter of public safety. I think that's very important for people to understand. We're not trying to make money off the people in this town. We're trying to keep them safe.
No, we're not. And the way we manage traffic enforcement is we listen to citizens who tell us that there's, there are unsafe conditions in their neighborhoods. We look at traffic data. We look at how people crash and why. We look at trends. For instance, nationally, there's been a slight decrease in traffic fatalities, but the percentage of those fatalities that are pedestrians, we see growing, not just not around here, that's nationwide. So over the last couple of years, we've done more around pedestrian enforcement. When we do a stop, our officers will introduce themselves, tell the motorists why they've been stopped. They take into account the severity of the violation, the person's driving record, and then they will make a choice of whether it's a fine or a written warning, or in some cases, a verbal warning, and that's how we manage our traffic enforcement. And you're right, that's why I mentioned we don't do it for the revenue if somebody's been fined. You know, we do it as a means of enhancing public safety. I should tell you, by the way, on the issue of pedestrians, that we're in the midst of the final stages of a grant, and over the course of the next couple of months, you'll see more traffic enforcement in the uptown area and in South Norwood and in the congested pedestrian areas. We will not only be citing people who don't stop, but pedestrians across walks, we'll also be giving them educational material. And when we see pedestrians crossing the street, not crossing safely, we'll be encountering them and giving them the same written materials about, because pedestrian safety is really everybody's responsibility, not just the motors and not just the pedestrian. So you'll see that over the course of the next couple of months.
The yellow traffic light does not mean speed up to get through the light.
See if you can make it through. No, no, that doesn't. That's a misnomer.
It doesn't?
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Okay. Chief, you mentioned drug overdoses. Was there a, has the United States reached an agreement with China on the treatment of fentanyl? Is there some news on that in the last 60 or 90 days?
Yes, there was. The main source country for fentanyl coming into the United States is China, and their system of criminal justice, obviously, is different from ours, and I don't completely understand it, but there was something about, you know, the fentanyl is being produced in China, of course, is illicit. The government doesn't sanction it, and the government doesn't oversee it. These are done by criminal groups, but I don't think the criminal sanctions were as clear in China. Here, we call it the scheduling of substance, in other words, making it unlawful to distribute. And China, over the course of the last six months, has scheduled fentanyl, in other words, to make it an illicit substance as a matter of law in China. They did that cooperation with the State Department in trying to bring down the amount of fentanyl that comes out of China that enters Mexico and the U.S., that affects us here in the U.S.
Okay. Thank you very much. We all set? Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate your time. Chief Maurice?
Welcome. Good evening.
The floor is yours.
I just wanted to go over a few things for the fire department. Number one, our run numbers went up by 114 runs for the year 2018. We did a total of 5,730 runs, which is a very, very busy department. One big thing that happened at the beginning of my tenure as the chief is I had to form a new engine committee to purchase a new engine for the department, and one of the issues that it was facing was the timeframe. We wanted to get the actual purchase order in for the engine before the end of the year because with the tariffs, we were probably going to lose about $30,000. And Lieutenant Jeff Campilio is the lieutenant on Group One, and he actually ran the new engine committee, and they were able to work very diligently and get the new engine designed and into the dealer so we could get a purchase order done and save the town that $30,000. So I want to commend him and the new engine committee for the work they did on that.
What's the total cost again? I'm sorry.
It's going to be $650,000. And there'll probably be additional costs for equipment.
Save about 4%. Okay. Thank you.
So, and I just wanted to go over some of the excellent work that the department does. We don't always hear about that. We did have a busy month of December coming into January. We had a fire at a warehouse on Canton Street. The call came in for a fully engulfed warehouse. Crews arrived to find a heavy smoke condition, fire inside. They did have, it was an electrical supply warehouse, and everyone was exited out of the building, but crews were able to go in and make a quick knockdown on the fire. It was determined that a forklift was actually raising equipment up onto shelving and had hit a heater that was mounted in the ceiling. That cracked a gas line, then ignited, and it basically acted as a giant flamethrower. So the guys did not only a great job extinguishing the fire, but understanding that it was being fed by natural gas, and were able to shut that down. Another fire that we had recently was on Wheelock Ave. It was a carriage house in the back of a home. It was an accidental fire, ignited some sleeping material. There was an individual in the carriage house who had a very, very minor burn. Crews were able to transport him to the hospital, but also a quick knockdown completely saved the carriage house. And the third fire that we've had recently was on Morgan Drive. I'll just say it was a small explosion and fire in an oven. So crews had to go in, notice that the temperature was rising and rising on the oven after being called. Explosion happened, but they had venting at the top of the oven, which released that pressure, but then started a fire because of some of the grease, and crews were able to go in and extinguish that quickly also. The business was actually up and running and doing production within, I think, three, four hours after that. Excellent work by the department fire-wise. Emergency medical services-wise, we did have a resident in town, an individual that I grew up with, played youth sports with, who had a cardiac event. And actually, when it's a cardiac arrest, family was doing CPR on the individual. Crews came. We had our advanced life support ambulance show up with paramedics and the engine. We had our advanced life support ambulance show up with paramedics and the engine. Everyone on scene did an excellent job. They actually were able to bring this individual back from having no pulse to having a pulse, transported him into Boston Hospital, and he is now home in Norwood and up and walking around talking. So excellent job there. And then my last one, as I highlight all the great work we do. In the center of town, we had an unexpected birth of a newborn baby in the home. The baby was not breathing. Family called the fire department. Dispatcher Ronnie Lanzoni actually instructed the family how to basically stimulate the infant and to try to get the infant breathing. Crew showed up. Again, our advanced life support paramedics and others, they were able to treat the infant, also took care of the mother, were able to deliver the afterbirth, and separately with our ALS and BLS ambulance transported the mother and baby to Norwood Hospital where they were doing well. Just some of the things that my guys and girls deal with every day that we don't always hear, and just great work there. I know Chief Brooks had mentioned firefighter, Lieutenant John Cody. He's my fire prevention lieutenant. He recently has reestablished a relationship with FM Global, which is the former factory mutual on Route One. And what they do is they're an insurance company that insures large commercial properties and businesses, but they focus on not doing actuary work more as they go in and engineer plans for the safety of the business. They have a new facility, roughly a year old now, in the back of FM Global, where they have all types of training for fire, sprinkler systems, alarm systems, how to deal with electrical emergencies, gas emergencies, all that. So Lieutenant Cody was able to reestablish that relationship with them, and we're looking forward to doing training. They're very willing to do training with the members of the fire department and take care of us that way. So that's something we don't normally have to do, and that's a great thing. I do know also that they offer grants, which we hope to go after in the future and see what we can obtain from them that way. And as of that, I think that's about.
All right. Very good. Good report. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just one item, that being a pest, looking at the numbers on your report, the monthly reports that you give us, it appears to me that we could be in trouble the last six months of this fiscal period with the substitution account, that as you just illustrated, all the runs we have, and I think if I'm correct, aren't the medical runs about two-thirds of the total runs of the department on average, something like that? Maybe even higher, for all I know. But the point is, it's a substantial amount of the runs. But as I said, it kind of looks that way, that coming into the last half of the year, that account in particular could be in trouble.
Yes.
Maybe not. Maybe we'll find some money somewhere else to help us out.
Well, I'm currently working on it. We do face some challenges right now. We do have one individual who's overseas with the military. We have a number of individuals that are out injured. I'm actively working with the town's IOD insurance company to try to get those individuals mended up and back on the job as quickly as possible. And then we have one individual who had an unexpected illness that required surgery, so he was out and will be out for a little while longer. So I am working on that, trying to manage it and see if we can get everyone back to work and the crews up to full shifts.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, chief.
Hello, Mrs. Donahue.
That, our relationship with FM Global, that's a very old relationship. They were doing that more than forty years ago, practicing there, and they let the Norwood firefighters too. They do wonderful tests there.
They do.
And it's all because of their insurance business, you know? So Joe Sheehan, he was their counsel, and he was a school committee member here, and John Rennie, he was the vice president there at FM. And so many people from Norwood currently work there. It's been a wonderful asset in the town of Norwood. They've helped us out for a long time. They've been wonderful part of our community here. The other question that I have is in your report on page one about the firefighter that's been on leave since December first of seventeen.
Yes.
So how does, that's a long-term illness, chief. How does that work?
It is. That firefighter was placed on injured on duty, and he's currently receiving treatment. He did have some surgery that was required to correct the issue that he had, and right now, he's currently doing physical therapy. But the type of surgery he had was major surgery, so it's going to require a long period of time for him to recuperate.
So will he be coming back to active duty at some point?
That remains to be seen. I know the individual wants to come back. He's been working very hard in physical therapy. I just don't know if that will happen or not. That will be up to the medical professionals, the physician, to let him know that, yes, you can come back or not.
So in a case like that, what is the usual procedure? You just wait?
We do. I also did what was called a medical exam for the individual. I had a specific medical exam done for him, which was to kind of see where he was at with his recuperative process, and the physician had determined that he was not at maximum recuperative point, so they want him to do physical therapy longer. So that, other than that, there's really all we can do is wait.
So a few years ago, I think we had a company that did that type of investigation for us, for the town?
For the medical?
Right.
That's the firm he's using.
Is that the same one you're using?
Yes. Cooking Company. It may have been different a number of years ago, but that's who the town uses now.
So have they been taking care of this for us?
They have, yes.
So how often do they report to you?
Almost every week. And that individual is in contact with me also. We have a clear line of communication. He updates me as to when he started certain types of physical therapy, when he's had, you know, different appointments with his physicians to see where he is at. So yes, I'm in constant contact with Cooking Company.
Thank you. I hope that the person's better soon. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue.
I have some questions on substitution also, but it's been covered.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, we talked about the various things the fire department has done, delivering babies and fighting fires and shutting off gas and so on and so on. So with that said, I really want to thank Deputy Chief Maggio, because it all comes down to training, whether it's the fire department or the police department, or even the light department, or anywhere else for that matter. It comes down to training, habitual training. And I see from your training report every month, there's constantly training going on. So that keeps everybody safe, and we get the maximum effect out of our training. So thank Chief, Deputy Chief, I don't want to put him ahead of you. Deputy Chief Maggio, if I may personally, if you would, for keeping up that training program.
Deputy Chief Maggio is...
And everybody under him.
Easily the most knowledgeable firefighter in the building, and he's always been a great resource to me, from when I was a firefighter lieutenant up to captain, always able to go into his office, ask him different questions. He'd have the answers, whether it was fighting a fire or any type of sprinkler questions, things of that nature. Unfortunately, he will be retiring in the somewhat near future, so we hate to lose a knowledgeable, great knowledgeable firefighter.
Very knowledgeable. I would personally stand to see him go when the time comes, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Just, Chief, you mentioned we did fifty-seven hundred and thirty runs in 2000, and that's up one hundred and forty or something like that. I'm sorry.
One hundred and fourteen.
It's up one hundred and fourteen. So that's about sixteen a day, right? Three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Okay? So every, round the clock, you know, two every three hours, someone's going up to do something for somebody out of that station.
We have an extremely busy department. I think you could put us up against any single station in Boston, not Boston as a whole, but some of the individual ones, and you'll find our run numbers are comparable or more.
Are we unusual in having one fire station for a thirty thousand population?
Yes.
Yeah.
But seeing as Norwood is small geographically.
Yeah. Okay.
Would have been nice to have one in South Norwood.
I know a perfect lot, I think, right?
All right.
Oh, that's a beautiful lot.
Very good. All right. Everybody all set then? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, chief.
All right. We thank both of our chiefs, and we'll move on now to new business. All right, everybody, here we go. New business number one, West Stern's chief operating officer, LaRusso Corporation, submitting check in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and two dollars and thirty-seven cents in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between the town and Norfolk Asphalt. This is the annual payment for 2018.
Motion to accept the forty-four fifty-three, any donation put in the existing account?
Motion to accept made, and seconded anything further?
On the, on the motion?
On the motion, Mr. Bishop.
I just want to ask my colleague, Mr. Glasgow, would that be considered a donation if it's under a contractual agreement with them?
I thought it was. It's totally voluntary, and I thought that's how we set it up originally.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Item two, Certus Adjustment Incorporated Mansfield, submitting notification of insurance loss will be forwarded to treasurer.
Information filed.
Information filed made.
Mr. Chair?
And on that, on the motion, Mr. Howard.
Just a comment, this is one of the random insurance payments that's been made in our town in a certain situation that, who knows the reason, we are notified periodically on these.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Item three, David Hajar, Finance Commission, Recreation Department liaison, submitting FY eighteen Recreation Department financial overview.
Information.
Second.
Information made, made and seconded. It appears, it shows that the Recreation Department is covering a greater share of its budget with, through the institution of higher fees that this board put in.
We can use that during budget discussions?
Yeah. Very good. All right. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Item four, Russ McGuire, manager of Norwood Memorial Airport. The Norwood Airport Commission has voted to rename its snow removal equipment slash administration building in honor of retired U.S. Marine Corps Major Mark C. Welch. Major Welch was the son of Joe and Anita Welch of Norwood. Major Welch graduated from the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis, served two tours of duty in Iraq, as well as tours in Afghanistan, Bosnia, and Kosovo. Chairman Mark Ryan, NAC, stated that Major Mark C. Welch administration building will carry the name of someone we can all be proud of, a highly decorated helicopter pilot and veteran who was also a native son. Major Welch passed away on April ten, two thousand and sixteen. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke with Mark Ryan about this, and I suggested to him that we have an appropriate ceremony when the building is completed, and that we invite the different Marine Corps League detachments, including the Norfolk County Marine Corps League detachment, and celebrate. So I move that we endorse this concept.
All right. We have a motion to endorse the concept of a ceremony as described by Mrs. Donahue, made and seconded.
On the motion, sir.
On the motion, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. I think it's important to do as much as we can, and my colleague, Mrs. Donahue, was correct. We should have to show him the proper, the proper presentation.
Respect.
Respect, exactly. This is what I'm looking for. Under combat conditions, under fire, he actually has landed his helicopter and evacuated other soldiers who were under heavy fire and removed them from the scene at the risk of his own life. So in my respect, he's a true American hero, and we should give him all the respect that he's duly noted for, or should be noted for.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Anything further? All right. We have a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Item five, TRC Environmental Corporation, submitting notice of availability remedial action plan Norfolk Asphalt.
Information filed.
Information filed, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Let's see. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council, number six, Metropolitan Area Planning Council submitting invitation to submit project concepts for work through their technical assistance program.
Just make sure I copy that one to Town Planner.
To the, I'm sorry?
Mr. Hellkey, oh, yes.
Very good.
Sure he has a copy?
All right. Can we make sure he gets a copy? If he doesn't have it already?
He may already have it, but just to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Mizuko, do you have anything on this one? The MAPC?
Usually every year, we'll submit one or two projects. What they provide is a small amount of technical assistance, feasibility studies, or engineering reports for small projects that you're looking to do. So we usually submit a few things a year, and sometimes we might get one or two.
Okay. Very good.
So it's pretty much information, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion filed, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Verizon submitting notification that Disney and ESPN may not continue providing access to its network. The contract runs out on December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. They have given Disney an offer which has been rejected.
Not just little Norwood, but national firms have the same problems.
Information filed. Second.
Made and seconded. ESPN, wow, ESPN. And Mickey Mouse? All right. Well, I'll beat you back. All right. Anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right. Thank you. All right. Very good. Let's see. Number eight, Comcast submitting notification that MGM TV has terminated its contract effective February one, two thousand and nineteen.
Information filed.
Information filed, made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Let's see. Let's see. Thank you. Number nine, ABCC submitting approval of alteration of premises for Castle Island Brewery.
Information filed.
Information filed made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Number 10, thank you. Number 10, Cynthia Ross St. Catherine School submitting request for one-day malt beverage license for Friday, May 18, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Number 11, Prime Motor Group submitting applications for Class I licenses for AMR Auto Holdings BN LLC, DBA BMW of Norwood, 918 Boston Providence Turnpike, semi-colon, AMR Auto Holdings MN LLC, DBA Prime Mazda, comma, AMR Auto Holdings 920 Boston Providence Turnpike, semi-colon, VWN LLC, DBA Volkswagen of Norwood, 1280 Boston Providence Turnpike. This is presently Gallery Automotive Group.
Motion for a public hearing, sir.
Motion for a public hearing made and seconded. On the motion, Mrs. Donahue.
I just agree with... I second the motion, but I just wanted to comment, all those dealerships were started by a young man when he was 22 and 24 years old, David Spiegel. How about that?
Very good.
David Spiegel's life's work.
All right. So we have a motion to set up a public hearing. Do they want to do it next week, or is it too soon? Too soon, okay. All right, well, we'll set it up. Very good. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 12, Matt Silverstein, Brad Arter, AR Jump, 570 Boston Providence Turnpike, submitting notification that they are selling their business to Arena NL Inc.
Information at this time, sir?
Second.
Information at this time made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 13, I think this is related. Mark J. Murphy, Arena NL Inc., Launch Trampoline Park, 570 Boston Providence Turnpike, submitting application for CV license and automatic amusement license to operate Launch Trampoline Park. Public hearing needed.
Motion to set the hearing?
Second, sir.
Motion to set the hearing made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 14, John Paris, Knights of Columbus, 572 Nickel Street, submitting request for one-day AAB license for Saturday, January 19, 2019, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 15, Cemetery Deeds for Approval and Signature of the Board.
Motion to sign, sir.
Motion to sign made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 16, Philip Dixon, Residence in Norwood, submitting notification that he is the new general manager of Residence in Norwood, Canton.
Information filed.
Second.
Information filed made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number 17, Mohammed Adams, 74 Plymouth Drive Apartment, Dean, Norwood, submitting request for approval to drive through Norwood on the way to Logan Airport. The board has approved this in the past with the following restrictions, quote, "Not to act as a taxi or livery while in the bounds of Norwood, just to pass through town," unquote.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 18, Eric Champa, 260 Weatherby Drive, Westwood, submitting application for a CV license to operate EMC Restaurant, DBA Same Old Place, 111 Lenox Street. Public hearing needed.
Motion for a public hearing, sir.
Motion for a public hearing made and seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 19, Norwood Cultural Council submitting request to appoint Denise Kylie to the Cultural Council. This will bring the number on the council to eight. The board has capped the number of members to nine, at nine.
Motion to appoint Denise.
Motion to appoint Denise Kylie made and seconded. Just one thing on that. I attended the cultural council meeting last night chaired by Kelly Adomanov, and they met for about two and a half hours to discuss the various requests for funding for the cultural councils. They take responsibility quite seriously. It was really, it was really a pleasure to work with them last night. And I also happen to know Denise Kylie. I think she'll be excellent on this board, by the way. So this will bring it to eight, so there is one opening. And that eight includes Leah O'Leary, by the way, whom we appointed a couple months ago, but who's out of town. She's going to stay on. All right. Anything further on that? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. That does it with new business. Unfinished business, Robert Thornton, CPA, submitting correspondence regarding financial decisions for the town of Norwood. We tabled it until tonight, but maybe, Mr. Plasko, do we want to table it a little further?
I think that's what we tabled again. I thought the motion was, my understanding, I made the motion was to table it until we get the recommendation over from the Budget Billet Committee on this topic and then have a full discussion of the whole issue.
Okay. All right. All right. So that's how I understood it, too. It's my fault for being on there tonight. So we want to include that in a discussion later on, probably later this month. We'll have something to say about it next week, I think. All right. So we have a motion to retable. Made?
Second.
Seconded. Anything further? Hearing none, put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Let's see. This is memorandum. I don't have anything else here on memorandum, so let's see. Mr. Mizuko, are you prepared to discuss anything?
Just one item I'd like to bring up. Construction has started at Access Road. If anyone's driven by the building lately, you'll see crews out there working. I've been attending the weekly construction meetings. I actually receive a daily site update from the OPM at the site that has construction pictures and updates of what's been done during the day for each day that the project has been worked on. We'll have a more formal report when Superintendent Collins is here, I believe, either next week or the following week. That'll have a monthly report from the contractor and the OPM, but the project is going along well so far.
Okay. That's good to hear. One thing from me, Mr. Mizuko, I know we, in the opening comments, talked a little bit about the Green Communities Initiative, and I fumbled it around a little bit. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So we started last year preparing to enter to the state's Green Communities Program. So it's an energy efficiency program whereby cities and towns commit to a certain number of energy standards, stretch energy code, for instance, the citing of solar in town or other renewable energy sources, that bylaw for which we've actually already passed at our last town meeting. We then come up with an energy reduction plan to look at reducing municipal energy use by 20% over the five-year, over a five-year period. Once we do all that, we submit it all to the state, it gets approved. We're in the Green Communities Program. Right off the bat, we get about $180,000 in grant funding unrestricted to be used towards energy efficiency projects in town, so that could be any town or school building. We're able to apply over the next five years for up to $1 million. It's actually $1.25 million in funds for energy efficiency. So that could be something simple, as we're replacing a boiler at an elementary school. It's a half a million dollar job. We can apply to the state for up to quarter of a million dollars of that. So there's potentially well over $1 million in this program that we can access by participating in the program. It's also going to kick off some other sustainability initiatives we want to look at over the next few years, but this is really the sort of the first one to get us in there. And it's money that comes from the state. Interestingly enough, it's not money that we have to pay into the state, but we're able to access from the state.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the information, Mr. Mizuko. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mizuko before we go to selectmen's agenda?
If I could just do one question?
What's that?
One question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Mizuko, we spoke about a retail grocery that could be named wanting to remove all plastic bags from their establishment. Does that come under that heading?
It would. That's one of the initiatives I think we should take a look at. I'm going to have a recommendation of the board in the next few weeks that maybe we do an ad hoc committee on some of these sustainability initiatives that a lot of communities throughout the Commonwealth have done. Banning plastic bags is one of them. We happened to do it in the last community I worked in, and it worked without a problem. There needs to be an analysis. There needs to be a conversation with the retailers. The focus is always obviously on the smaller retailers, the big box retailers. You're not as concerned about the impact, and there tends to be less of an impact. So you have to approach these things thoughtfully. But plastic bag bans, looking at styrofoam, straws have become big lately, and there's a lot of different sustainability initiatives that we can look at that I think would be good for the community. There is a large food service retailer out there that just announced today, it's Big Y, I mean, it's public, it's in the news, that by 2020, they're not going to have any plastic bags in their stores. So we do have a Big Y, obviously, here in town. I was kind of surprised that a retailer came out and did that sort of on their own, but I do remember when I was working on this out in Western Mass, Big Y was one of the first stores we went to, and we said, okay, we're looking at doing this. What are your concerns? What are your customers' concerns? How can we work together? And they were right on board with making it happen. So I think it's a good thing, and it's a good sustainability move that the town can make, and it's time to start looking at these things, which not only improve the environment and have that sustainability impact for the community, but as we always remember, we're in competition with our neighbors and other communities in the Commonwealth, and it's not an area where we want to focus or fall behind. It's something that people look at when they're looking to move to a community, and it's something businesses look at, the overall sustainability and the sustainability practices of the community. So I'm excited by what the next year can bring. I think we can make some solid, sustainable progress for the community.
I am excited also to hear that news from Big Y, and I will help you in any way I can in that area.
Thank you very much.
I'm not earthy crunchy by any means, but what's right is right, and I think it's time to start getting rid of plastic bags and plastic straws, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko.
Well, we're as green as we have to be.
Save it for St. Patrick's Day.
Whatever virtue signaling we have to do to attract people and make us look good is fine. But you know what, Mr. Mizuko? This takes away one of the great pleasures of a man's life, which is going out to the vehicle, opening the trunk, and getting 10 bags with 10 fingers out and into the house in one pass. Now you're going to pick up all the bags.
When you go with cloth or the reusable bags, you can actually hold more of them. Because I'm somebody, it doesn't matter how many groceries I buy, it needs to be one trip. So if it doesn't make it in that one trip, it's staying in the trunk. Although, literally, I haven't looked at a plastic bag ban before. The number one question and concern people have is, what are they going to do to put in their bathroom trash barrel that everyone puts a plastic bag?
Yes.
That's the number one concern.
That's the biggest problem.
Somehow, what we came up with is everyone has so many of those stored under their sinks that it won't be a problem.
Don't throw them away.
I'm still using bags from Caribou Main several years ago that you store enough of them, you'll have enough for your bathroom trash barrels for a while. But all joking aside, there certainly was working with the community and businesses in the community to understand the impact, but I think there's a lot of progress we can make.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further questions for Mr. Mizuko, we'll go to selectmen's agenda, and we will start with Mr. Plasko.
I only have a farewell thank you to Fran Jesso. Tonight's her last night with us. She'll be here through the end of the week, but then she's going to enjoy a nice retirement with her husband, Paul, and family. And Fran, I said this tonight, we got your letter that you were retiring, that I've known all the people that have held you up position for about 45 years now, and they've all been dedicated to this office, and you've been the epitome of it. You hold this office in such high esteem. You work every day to be so professional and to represent whoever's serving on the board of selectmen. And no matter what our personalities or what our quirks are, every person that's come through this board, you've shown nothing but the most respect and worked with and helped so much. And I know personally, I can never say enough how much you and Christina have individually assisted me in the efforts I try to work on. So thank you very much, and I hope you really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's hard for you to say goodbye. And when you think how you and Christina and Julie really are the board, you're here on a daily basis, and the public meets you, and you've done a fabulous job over the years, and we appreciate it very, very, very much. And Mr. Mizuko, you lost your Debbie Melcher. She was 28 years here, and she retired this past week. So this is, the times, was it Bob Dylan? Times are a-changing.
The times they are a-changing.
You know? And but now...
Fran, you're sure there's a physician downstairs.
But now, Fran, you have some fun, having worked your whole life, and we wish you the very, very, very best. I'd like to also take a minute and congratulate George Lally. George has been in Norwood for so many years, and I read in the newspaper that he was just inducted into the Babe Ruth League, National Babe Ruth League Call of Fame. In the whole United States, there are only 200 people that have been in, and he, over the years, year after year after year, he's worked helping the Babe Ruth League provide baseball to kids from four to 18 years old. And I knew George since the beginning, when he was here with Joe Mochley. He was Joe Mochley's friend, and that's how I got to know him. But he said that's all he does, is positive things, coached and administrated office, national office, consistently working to make sure that every kid has a chance to play, which is what it's supposed to be about, not superstars, just every kid, having the pleasure of being a team member and playing. George, wish you the very best and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, folks, it is now that time of year again that we're coming up to the first Monday in April, which is our annual town meeting for our town, annual town meeting in our election. They call it the election, the town meeting, but it's a election. So anyways, my point to that is that nomination papers are now available in the clerk's office. We, in the most recent years, have been short of town meeting member candidates in various districts of the town. We need people in the town meeting seats. This is the most important job, in my opinion, in our town, town meeting. And all you need is 10 signatures to get on the ballot and represent your district at town meeting. Very important, folks. Please consider being a town meeting member. And now, Mrs. Jesso. I'm coming to the end of my eighth year on this board of selectmen. One of those years, I was fortunate to be chairman of this esteemed board, and you carried me well. You counseled me, you advised me, you did so many things to assist me, both at that time as chairman and at other times. And as you have said quite a few times, which is very true, that your main function was to protect your selectmen. And I think you said it exactly that way, your selectmen. And yes, I'm going to miss you sincerely, and we look forward to celebrating this occasion with you. Thank you very much for your service to us and to the town of Norwood. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to start with one small item. This year, 2019, is the 100th anniversary of the Norwood Hospital. We'll hear about that in the future or weeks to come, I'm sure, as far as a celebration to let everybody know what's going on. One of the things I do want to do in the closing, is again, like my colleagues, thank Mrs. Jesso. Again, like my colleague, Mr. Howard, I've been here just finishing up on eight years. I could not have gotten through the first week, let alone years, without the assistance from Mrs. Jesso. She is the heart and soul, the heart, the lungs, whatever you want to say. She runs this place along with Christina Mulvihill. They make our lives extremely easy, and I want to thank her for that. And most importantly, I want to thank her for friendship, both her and her husband, Paul. They're a lovely couple, and I love them dearly, and I thank Fran for her service to the town, but especially the service to the board. Thank you. Thank you, Frances.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll say thank you. Just a couple of items from here. One is, on December 7th past, the Cambridge-based firm with a major research facility in Norwood, Moderna Therapeutics, held its initial public offering, and it turned out to be the largest biotech industry IPO in history. Moderna raised $604 million. So we are proud to have that company in our town, proud to have them as a part of our Norwood family. We hope, of course, that their success continues, but they're off to a good start. And also, just the last thing here, Fran, thank you also. My colleagues have said it quite eloquently, as they always do. Mr. Howard made mention about how one of your assignments is to protect the board, of course, so that's why you were so busy. Protect us from ourselves. And no, but thank you for your wisdom, your guidance, and your love. It has been a pleasure working with you these past few years, and I know you're going to enjoy your retirement. We're not going to say goodbye, we're going to say arrivederci, because we will see you again, of course.
Thank you.
Okay. So anything further?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week.